Well, and I've also had recently some very troubling problems with the police department. But there's no one to communicate that with, and when I did ask for the results of my call, I was avoided. So I would think, and I would be glad to me, I'd be put it in writing, I would tell you exactly what happened, I would also tell you during the time when I was a supervisor, all the things that the police did to me, my husband, and my grandson, eight years old. And when I think about them, I am greatly distressed, and it causes a lot of problems. I do not want to pay a real estate tax, and that's how, I always worked in the township, not to have a tax. And I think that's what you should be gearing yourself for. I can't afford it, and I do not feel we need that expensive of a police department. I also know, being on the school board at a time, they had police there. Yet, they were selected as to who they charged, et cetera. So I'm well aware of everything going on regarding police and the individuals here. And I do feel some adjustments have to be made and should be made. I'm not willing to pay for that high-priced amount of police protection. And I do feel many minor things, you take care of it yourself. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And again, I would gladly speak with anybody on this board, if you take the time, and I'll mention to you what officers did while I was a supervisor, and currently what has transpired in 2013. Okay, I do not want a real estate tax.
In terms of a real estate tax, a 1.25 mil for me would be about $150 a year. That's about one month's worth of my telecommunications bill, my cellphone, my cable, and my TV. I think that could be money well worth spent, and I am on fixed income, so I'd have absolutely no problem with the 1.25 mil, at about $150 a year. I think it would be money well spent. I'm a member of the planning commission, and during the comprehensive plan and the general public comment period we had, there was a strong, strong support for the police force. I don't think there's a large sentiment in the township to remove or reduce the police force. I think it's a well-funded and well-needed element in the budget. I am disappointed that the borough managers removed from this, because I do think that's also critical. I don't think, in today's complexities, it's fair to ask volunteers such as yourself to act as a full-time, almost-paid staff within the township. It's just much too complicated. I think we really do need a paid professional manager. But I can understand the difficulty in terms of the budget process, so I'd certainly be willing to go with the 1.25 and forego the manager until such time in the future that it might be possible. I would like to see, and I don't think it's in here, I would like to see the trash removal removed from the residents, the citizens paying for it, and added to a service that's being provided by the township. And to make those adjustments, so it would be a net effect. We would pay the same amount of money, only it would be in a property tax versus sending the bill off to the trash removal. That way, we get the tax reduction. So it would be a nice little benefit. Thank you.
I only heard one supervisor today, Mr. Porter, that went over the budget and cut this, cut this, cut that. And how much did you save, Mr. Porter? $170,000?
Oh, I mean, that's not the one before the board on the motion. I was just going through, I was going through real quick here, because...
Right, that's what I'm talking about. I thought, that's what we talked about. Because I wanted to know, Joe, or maybe Steve, have you guys made any recommendations on cutting down like he did?
From which budget?
The budget you're trying to work on.
Well, yeah, we're making some concessions. I mean, I want a township manager, but I'm willing to take that out of the budget right now to get this thing passed, so we can continue a function as a government entity. So, yeah, I mean, we, we're a township manager, take away some of the road things, some of the things Potty suggested, which I don't want to see those removed from the budget. But in the interest of trying to come to a happy medium, or meet somewhere in the middle to get this passed, I am willing to do that, yes.
Okay. I want, not too many people want to speak up the road department, but I want to pick up the road department. I think they do a good job.
I agree.
You know, and not just, not just the police.
I agree.
You know, and we need them too.
Yeah.
You know, and I wish, you know, when they, when they, if they get their raises, you guys, hopefully you guys can always try to negotiate with them, instead of going to the lawyer all the time. Can, you know, can you try to do it that way? And save money with getting the lawyers and fighting them? And try to work with the police, and not turn against them. Say, hey, you know, I'm a senior citizen too. And, you know, I don't get a raise. Last year, what, we got 2%? And if you, and you guys get 3%? I mean, hey, you know, sometimes you gotta stop. But we do need them.
Thank you, Mr. King. Go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the secretary. You're right, the police does do a good job, and they have, but in reference to the reports, this gentleman said, it's the FBI crime report that you can find out, any township, you know, what township, like Modena, South Coastville Township, you know, what the crime rate is in that area, how many murders, you know, which East Fallfield has one or two in the last couple of years. But in, and the police department knows as well as I do, they don't do the complete, you have Chester County detectives come out here, you have the state police crime unit comes out here. So everybody gets support from different departments. So, and I don't think anybody here tonight asked for anybody getting laid off. We did ask you, you know, the police has a contract, and they're unionized. The road department, it's got, is under, I think it's the Teamsters, all right? And we're spending a lot of money with a lawyer going through there, which, like the gentleman there said, should have been some little common sense talking before there, maybe we wouldn't have a union there. And Tagg and the rest of the guys there, they get a decent salary, they do a great job. But in reference to the, to get back to your, I was on the press 33, just increase in hours, basically that's what you said. And there's another thing, we spend a lot of money updating that building over there, possibility bringing the department, the police department used to be here. And also, you have, secretary could come over here too. That, I'll just say, people ride up and down 82, and I'm not saying it, but police cars are always sitting there. And of course, we know you have some on these, eight full-time, and X amount of five part-time. Well, it's not eight full-time all the time. You got one or two of them on disability, all right? So then you use your part-time work. So these, and also, there's some other items that come up with the full-time that will take them off. But when you're talking about the number, Joe, you bring up the, how many residents East Fallfield has, 8,000 to 9,000. West Bradford has over 15,000 people in that township, and that's right next door to us, all right? And their fire company comes here, and same with Modena, Westwood, and they back each other up. They have crime over there too. State police doesn't come there. I live on Strasburg Road, and I know a couple of other residents there. And they come back and forth every day. I've seen them two or three times a day going through East Fallfield. Strasburg Road, I know a couple of residents here now. There's nobody that has more accidents, and you can check the reports down where I live. It's been three or four. A farmer across the road, he gets his fence there. Now, you know, I'm just saying, I'm not in for the big increase. I'm a person, social security, we get nothing, military, we get nothing. So instead of cutting people, the salary could stay the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any other public comment? Mr. Scott?
Reference to West Bradford Township. Go back years ago, when Jack Hines was their township manager. When you drive down the Strasburg Road, when you get there to Lee's Road and Strasburg Road, where the water towers are, the Old Henryville Hospital, that complex that's there?
West Bradford paid for it.
West Bradford Township paid for that in entirety. That's how they got the Pennsylvania State Police to cover their township. Otherwise, they were moving out. So they, the township taxpayers, well, they're in an earned income tax paid for, because they do not have a millage. They also pay, go look at their reports, they did, I can't answer back today, on December the 30th of 2015. But West Bradford doesn't get away with not paying something towards the state police. So bottom line is, again, I have been pro, long before I became a supervisor, and I joined in 1956 at the Pumroy Volunteer Fire Company. That's when I got involved with the politics, and knew what our chief of police, Ray Jackson, and Meadow Mark, Markwood got. 75 cents and 50 cents an hour, and it has grown. Bottom line is, you need to have protection, and I think we have an excellent police force. Is it the best? No, there are problems. But I also like to expand on what Buddy said there, and what Nancy did when she stood up. One of the things that I've heard, not so much, well, nothing from an employee, but how many of you four supervisors that are sitting before me right now in this audience have taken the time, once you came on board as a supervisor, that we elected, that we elected, that actually have gone to the police department, stuck out their hand to the road department, stuck out their hand, and introduced themselves at the new supervisor, and wanted to sit down and talk to them. I didn't have to buy coffee, didn't have to buy, I drank hot chocolate, so that left me out of the coffee. But the bottom line is, that's where I feel that there's been a breakdown in communications and what we have a, have a union now, is because no one wanted to step out of there and came in here for some personal agendas, and didn't want to talk, didn't make an appointment. So to the taxpayers, we get a mindset that the supervisors are going to sit down, as you had talked earlier, and talk to these gentlemen, these employees, they are employees, that you have. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Scott?
I can't help but say, for Mr. Ron Scott, when he came on board as a supervisor, he immediately called a hearing to get rid of the police. So that just amazes me. Anyhow, also, he ran up the building, we had to go with a real estate, and they had to go to court to get the judge.
All right, Sharon, let's go to Sharon.
Well, you know, and then I would also say, comprehensive plan, that was rigged. We couldn't even give comment. And when we did, the fellow couldn't hear, he talked to the wall. Judge Otte's husband, from a certain law firm. So I would totally disagree with basic, and I would say, and I definitely do not want the trash fee put in so that we have to have a real estate tax. I like it just the way it is. I'll pay the bill, suits me fine. Thank you.
Joe, are we waiting for a motion? If I can get the response here, I know it's a lot of people talking about the reduction with the police department, or doing what the police department's...
Yes, might please.
The police department is in a contract, so they're not, I mean, technically, until that contract is over, they wouldn't technically be able to go anywhere. They're in a contract, they're protected. What happened when initially with the, with the reduction in officers, is when I sat up here, I was given a Plan A, a Plan B, and a Plan C. And I remember talking to Chris Porter at a public meeting, because one of the plans had a reduction of two officers within, within the plan. I had asked in the back room whether or not the department heads had addressed that when they had put these three plans together, and I was told yes. And then when I was out here speaking with Chief Porter, I looked at him, he looked at me, like I didn't know what I was talking about, he didn't know what, well, I didn't know what he was talking about. So basically, a plan was put in front of me that technically you cannot reduce the police department, because unless they've done something very serious, like a criminal activity or something, they're protected through the contract. That Plan C should never have been put in front of me, because you cannot reduce the police department as it stands, because they're protected by contract. So that's where it came about. I think, you know, I honestly didn't, I saw that and asked a question on that, and then I think it was taken a step forward. I think possibly the police department should know as well, I mean, I know if they're trying to protect their part-timers, but they know as well the full-timers aren't going anywhere. So I think there's been this battle going back and forth, putting information out there on people that technically can't go anywhere anyway, they're protected by contract. And it's unfortunate that that's not being addressed. But that's initially how this thing started with me, because, again, I was given a contract, I was given a budget before me, it was Plan C, a call for reduction of two full-time officers. I thought the department head had put that plan together. I was misinformed, and then when I questioned about it, that's where it ended. So I just want to make that statement.
Mr. Lady?
Thank you. I wasn't going to talk, I spoke the last two meetings, and I think I got my point across, I was just going to sit back and listen. And I hope that where you guys are going tonight is where I believe you're going, which I'll take, no reduction in this police force, no reduction in the road crew. I would like to see more benefits in this township. I would like to see roads fixed. I would like to see a growth in the police department, but if we get this budget fixed right now, and we can go into 2016, I'll be happy with that. And we can address it down the line, so we can increase things and come together as a community. Couple things, Mr. Porter, I do want to address the comment you just made. About three years ago, I was faced with a similar situation that these gentlemen and lady are, you know, possibly faced with. Your point that you can't reduce a department because they have a contract is wrong. It's just wrong. You can't reduce their benefits, you can't reduce their pay. You can lay off, you absolutely can. My department, yes you can, sir.
I've been instructed by my solicitor...
Sir, you can, and I was faced with it legally.
Well, I'm just saying it's not on the table, and the solicitor has advised the board that...
I'm just saying what you stated.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, that's the legal advice. I'm only stating, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, any of the board members, I mean, we just had this discussion, not particularly to reduce the police department, it's just about an issue that we have, and I was instructed that we cannot. I mean, it's something that has to be protected by contract, I was told that. If you're telling me otherwise, I mean, that's...
Yes, I'm telling you otherwise.
Okay. Well, I didn't know you were an attorney, I didn't know that.
No, I'm not an attorney, I'm somebody that's been through it, trust me, I know, I've lived through it. The gentleman in the front leaves it, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Nash.
Well, everyone knows my name.
I was just told your name, sir, sorry.
It's all right.
Eight full-time police officers.
And I thank you for your service. I'm not against police, I'm against paying more taxes.
Hey, nobody wants to pay more taxes. I don't want to pay more taxes, but again, if I have to, I will.
But my question, and, 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 you know, and everyone in here heard it, was, do we need the amount of police? It's not saying we don't want police, or I don't want police.
I, I, I get it, I get it. What I'm saying, and I understand, but what I'm saying is, the amount that we have right now, I believe is sufficient for today. I believe it actually should grow and increase. I believe, you know, we need actually increases, not only in the police department, we, we need a full-time traffic officer, okay? Everybody in here, I'm sure every resident in here is probably complaining about traffic, stop signs being run. You know, we needed one dedicated officer just to traffic, okay? That officer could also, and police, police work is not a money-making business. That officer could also do commercial inspections. Guess what? That brings revenue into the township.
Ten seconds.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the board.
Can I rebuttal real quick?
Quickly, yes.
Okay. I'm just looking at Parksburg, they have to go to different townships like Avondale, and farm their police out to help pay for them. You know, and they're, I'm not sure what their mileage is.
Their mileage is Parksburg?
Yeah, it's like 11 or something.
I thought it's, okay.
Yeah, it's crazy. I don't want to see that happen in East Fallfield.
Thank you, Mr. Nash.
All right, thank you.
All right, before we vote, this is any questions or comments, Mr. Krupp?
Yes, I'm Dennis Krupp. I just wanted to make one point more clear. The comprehensive plan has been a process, what we've done for over two years now, and we had some of the biggest turnout we've ever had, as far as the public participation in it. We even had a whole process over at the middle school, whole evening. Many people showed up, greater than probably anybody else has had, that Mr. Ott, who was in charge of it, has seen in many different townships, and he's gone to some that were bigger and smaller, and we had probably the best turnout ever. And having two years in this process to go through that, I think that's very important. All five of you voted to accept that and to put it into place. We just want to work further, get further and implement many of the different things we see as a goal for the township. I don't think anything's been railroaded or anything of the sort. You know, this is a process that we've done democratically in our township, and I think it's been a very important thing for everybody that's been in there. I've learned a lot from the people that's on the board with me on the planning commission, and I think that it's a very instrumental thing for this township. The thing that Mr. Swab was talking about earlier was to put in the, into the tax, the trash bill, that way you could get a federal income tax return, possibly through that aspect, where we get none right now. So that was the other aspect. I think that was all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
The only, the only problem I was thinking about, I mean, I was so big, I was really in favor of putting the trash fee into, I was so in favor of putting the trash fee, and I brought that up with the, with the, with the board. But the problem is, is everyone's house is assessed differently, and that's the, that's the real problem, you know, in trying to gauge that, what we pay for a fee for that. You know, we've worked that out per home, per rate. I mean, we did bring that price down. It was a higher rate, we brought that down, almost, what, $500?
$100.
Yeah, about $100. I mean, so, you know, given that everyone's home is assessed differently, I mean, it wouldn't be necessarily fair. I know it's not fair with the tax as well, but, you know, at least with the trash fee, we know that everyone's paying that fair fee. True, it's not deductible, but at the same time, we, I think we'd have to sit here and have to calculate out a lot, calculate out a lot, to determine how we're able to pay for the trash fee, based upon whose house is assessed for what, and going through. So it could be complicated, a complicated matter.
The trash fee itself would be 1.5 mil.
1.5 mil, to cover everything.
To bring in the $571,000 in revenue, it would be 1.5.
So we got 3.1. All right.
You're subtracting off though.
Yeah, it would take just 1.5.
Mr. Krupp?
How would you do the fare reports in our...
I'm just one of the unfortunate ones. I can't think of my taxes, my property taxes, or my mortgage interest, because I'm on a fixed income through social security, so it really hurts me, because no matter what you do, my trash here or there, or anything else, I'm done. You know, it's really hard when you're on, you go from 75,000 down to 8,000.
I want to make just an observation, and that goes to the trash fee that you're all talking about now. We were paying $305, and then it went down to 200, and really, or 205 or something?
210.
210, which is about a $100 reduction. And the 1.25 that we're asking for is basically bringing us back to where we were at 305. And I don't see one person in this room, when they got the reduction, come running to the township and go, oh my God, I got a reduction, that's not fair, I need to give you $100 more. We all kept that 100 and some dollars, and I'm saying, we need that $100 back. And because of the way the law works, the trash bill cannot create income. It has to be basically a break-even, this is what the trash bill costs, and this is what maybe some administrative costs are, and that's what the tax bill is. So if it was $305 to get rid of your trash before, it's going to be almost the same thing, $305 where we were a couple of years ago.
All those in favor? Aye.
Of what? Did we hear what the motion is?
I made the motion.
Well, let's hear it.
And what's the new budget?
Yeah, with the new budget and the 1.25.
And...
I already motioned, Sharon.
Okay, did Mr. Choak hear all what we said? And how do we...
I did.
And how do we know Mr. Choak has what in front of him?
Motion's made. All those in favor? Aye.
I will vote yes, in the interest of S and A, a legally balanced budget, but I highly oppose the majority of this budget. Just want to report that.
Great.
I'll say yes as well, so we can have a balanced budget and move forward, but I disagree with removing the township manager. I think that's a disservice to the township, and that's something we need to get back in to have the oversight of the day-to-day. But in the interest of moving forward, I will vote yes.
I would, just to add to that, I would hate for the board, which in two days is a new board, to reopen that budget.
Thank you, Mark. All right. Motion passes 3-2. Make a motion to adopt the Resolution 2015-09, authorizing the board supervisors of East Fallfield Township to levy a real estate property tax to be collected for the 2016 fiscal year for general purposes, with some of 1.25 mils, on each dollar of assessed valuation. Second? All those in favor? Aye.
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 3-2. Make a motion to adopt the Resolution 2015-10, to authorize the Chester County Treasurer to commence collection of the East Fallfield Township real estate taxes for the 2016 fiscal year. Second? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No discussion?
All right. Ready, public, public house. Scott?
In reference to the collection, it reads strongly municipal tax. You said real estate tax, but printed in front of me, it says collection of certain municipal taxes. Why would it read, why, there's two different things.
Which, which motion are you referring to, Sharon?
Well, I guess...
You verbally said, the real estate tax, yet it's printed here, it says, collection of certain municipal taxes. Why would it read, why, there's two different things.
Which, which motion referred to Sharon?
Well, I guess it's C.
That's not the motion.
Yeah, that's not the motion, that's just the...
Oh, that isn't the motion you're talking about? You're talking about the one...
Well, it is C, but it's the, it's where it says...
The actual motion. It says real estate tax.
Where does it say that?
Right underneath.